Thank you. So, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our special meeting of council to consider our updated development charges by law. Just a little different than most of our council meetings, we will take questions from participants or people watching this at the end of the presentation. But if you could use the raise hand when we get to that, if you could use the raise hand function within Zoom, then we will try to with myself and the help of some other folks, hopefully you'll try to catch everybody and give everybody a chance to ask questions if they wish to. And we'll go from there. So we will do some formalities at the beginning of the meeting, we'll turn it over to DFA.
Am I on? Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me, John?
Oh, there you are. Okay, I'm just okay, so is my screen shared?
It is.
It is. Okay, you can see the presentation. I'm just trying to get to the top of it.
Hi, John. Yeah, we've got a couple of things we got to address first, John, before you're on. So we'll let you get your presentation ready.
Okay, how do I unshare the screen?
Just to go over the process, we've got some formalities to deal with at the beginning of the meeting. Then we'll have the presentation from the folks at DFA. Then we will open the floor up to members of council initially for questions and comments. And then we'll also, after that, we'll open the floor to participants. If you should wish to ask questions, please use the raise hand function. And we will try to get to you and have your let you have an opportunity to ask a question. And then we will wrap it up and close out the meeting after that.
Excuse me, Mayor Lennox, there's also an option where attendees that are listening and watching can submit a written question to us and the panelists and the host can see those questions. So I will make a list of those questions and be sure that we can see what's being asked.
Hey, that's great, Karen. Thank you. I wasn't aware of that. So it's great that we have that functionality. With that said, I'll officially call the meeting to order at 2:03 PM. And the first item we have is the adoption of the agenda. So a recommendation here that the agenda for the November 30th, 2021, Special Meeting of Council be accepted and passed. Could I have a mover and a seconder for that? And since I can't see anybody, if you could just shout out for me, please?
I can move it, Andy.
Thank you, Steve. Thanks, Sherry. All those in favor?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, that's carried. Thank you. So we'll move on to disclosure of pecuniary interest. Sherry, do you have anything to declare today?
No.
Dan?
No.
Lisa?
No.
Steve?
None.
Okay, thank you. And I have no pecuniary interest to declare today either. So with that, we'll move right to the presentation and welcome John Murphy from DFA Infrastructure. And we'll turn it over to you, John. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it said, as he said, I'm John Murphy from DFA Infrastructure. I'm here with my associate Derek Alley. We're here to present the draft Development Charge Background Study and Bylaw for review and discussion. Today, probably a lot of you have seen or heard this before regards to development charges, what they are, what they're all about. So we will be doing sort of a quick background review on development charges for those that aren't familiar with them. We're also going to present the draft study and bylaw and then seek input from attendees, including members of council. So as part of the agenda, we're going to go through the background on development charges, show the services that are included in the background study, present the projected growth within the township, quickly go over historical service levels, which is part of the aspect of the calculation of development charges. Look at the net capital cost to be recovered from the anticipated future growth, present the draft development charges, and then compare those with other municipalities in the vicinity. And then part two will be talking about policies and rules. So development charges are fees levied against new development to recover what we call net capital costs, which are required to service that anticipated growth. And as we all know, the principle principles behind development charges are growth pays for growth. Development charges do not pay for the operating cost of the capital that's put in place to service to growth, does not recover any local services. Those are the services that are eternal to subdivisions and do not pay for the replacement of those growth-related capital assets. Development charges, the authority for imposing development charges are under the Development Charges Act and associated regulations. The act requires that for a municipality to impose development charges, a background study must be prepared. There must be at least one public meeting and a bylaw must be passed. Now, the township's bylaw expires June 16th, 2023. Now, the reason why we're undertaking this exercises, exercises because of recent legislation that has amended the Development Charges Act and requires municipalities to pass a new bylaw under the amended act by September 18th, 2022. So what happened was two pieces of legislation were passed by the province a year or so ago. More Homes, More Choice Act and the COVID-19 Economic Recovery Act. And what happened is those pieces of legislation changed a lot of acts, one being the Development Charges Act. Those changes are it removed the 10% statutory deduction for certain services. It did change the number of statutory exemptions, which are reflected in the draft bylaw. And one thing it did was it allowed for a deferral of payment for certain types of development and rules around the interest that can be charged by municipalities on the deferral of those payments. So saying that, what the act requires now is that for rental housing that is not nonprofit and institutional development pay development charges in six annual installments. And nonprofit housing can pay development charges that are calculated in 21 annual installments. Now, I put a note here that the township currently has a policy in regards to those deferral payments. And it's also reflected in the draft bylaw. So the main components of the background study that we prepared are the development forecast. We also had to calculate historical service levels, which I indicated was a requirement of the process. Also, a growth capital program. These are the projects that have a component which is required to service the anticipated new growth. And of course, the related policies that we'll be discussing later in the presentation. So these are the services that are currently included or that are included in the new bylaw. The only new service is bylaw enforcement and that it deals with a vehicle. Now, one thing, the act, the amendment to the legislation specified the services that are eligible for development charges and bylaw enforcement was included in that list. And that's why, the reason why this is now included in the new bylaw. So to start the discussion on the growth, and this is from the Wellington North Community Growth Plan, 2018, the most recent council-approved growth projections, I believe. As you can see, there is an anticipated 2,100 new residents in the township over the next 10 years and 4,400 over the for, we call to build out, which is to 2041. So that was the net population. Now, we call the gross population is applying the the occupancy factor, which is a person per unit by dwelling type to the projected number of new units by dwelling type to come up with a new residential population growth within those new units. Now, you can see that that number is higher. So over the next 10 years, there's anticipated to be 2,261 new residents within the new units. But as a result of mortality and economics, there is usually a decline in the population in the existing units within the municipalities. So the net growth is 2,100, well, it's 137 residents less as a result of that decline in the PPU's in the existing dwelling units. So when we look at growth within the urban area, and this is typically will be used in the calculation for sewer and water, because sewer and water is not provided outside those urban areas. You can see there's anticipated growth of 4,200 people or residents, and this is over to 2041 or out to 2041. Now, in regards to the employment growth, there is anticipated to be 867 new employees over the next 10 years and 1,459 to build up to 2041. Now, the employment growth is converted into a square foot calculation. And the bottom of that table, you can see the assumptions that were used. And this is from the 2016 Wellington County DC study in regards to the square foot per employee assumption. So what you have is anticipated non-residential growth of 708,000 square feet over the next 10 years and approximately 1.1, 1.2 million new square feet of non-residential growth to build up. And of course, the vast majority of that growth occurs within the urban areas, is projected to occur within the urban areas at 1.1 million square feet. So this is the historic service levels, which is a requirement of the act. So this is calculated on a per capita basis. So what the act pretty much says is that you can't spend more on a per capita basis on new development that than you currently provide. And they look at the the average historical service level over the last 10 years. So this is a cap that would be applied to your capital program in regards to how much you can recover to service the future growth. This cap was not, was not used. So there is no reduction in the amount that can be recovered as a result of applying this cap. So when we look at the capital costs that are being incurred to service the anticipated new growth, we're looking at, the township is looking at $25 million in gross capital costs for municipal-wide services and $18 million in gross capital costs for water and 25.6 million in gross capital costs for wastewater for a total of 68.6 million. So these costs are reduced to as a result of certain deductions. And one deduction is the gross capital costs include all costs related to a capital project. Now, those costs are reduced by how much of that project would benefit existing residents and existing population. So those factors are applied on a project-by-project basis to reduce the capital costs that can be recovered from development charges. Also, the balance of the reserve is deducted from those gross capital costs because it's pretty much stated that those are almost a prepayment in development charges. So at the end of the day, the capital costs that are allowed to be recovered as a result of applying the requirements of the Development Charges Act, you're looking at $6.4 million in municipal-wide net capital costs and 6.5 billion in water capital costs and 19.9 million in wastewater net capital costs. Those net capital costs are then allocated between residential growth and employment growth. And the assumptions are listed on the, the assumptions for those allocations are listed on the last column. And as you can see, mostly the services are allocated between residential and non-residential based on the percent of residential population growth and employment growth. For some services like parks and rec, typically those are provided mainly to residential population and not employment, but we put a 5% non-residential component aside on the air of caution. So let me go back here. So what happens is those net capital costs are for residential growth are there's a calculation that allocates those costs at a per capita basis for residential growth. And for non-residential growth, it's allocated based on the gross floor area. So for residential, the cost per capita, what happens is we apply the occupancy for the PPU's associated with certain dwelling types to calculate what the charge is for those dwelling types. And these were the the PPU values that were used in the previous study. So when those PPU's are applied to the per capita charge, we are able to calculate what the charge is per dwelling type. So you can see the semi, the single and semi-detached dwelling, the charge is 19,426 apartments two bedrooms and above are 12,605 apartments, one bedroom and bachelor are 9,195 and other multiples are 14,624. So for the non-residential charge, the same thing, it's the net capital costs that are allocated to non-residential growth divided by the projected gross floor area to give you a cost per square foot. And now you can see the commercial charge is pretty much the the calculated charge, which is $7.07. Now, as a result of the current policies that are in place in the bylaw, the industrial charge is 50% of the commercial charge and the warehouse charge is 25% of the commercial charge. The wind turbine is reflected as the municipal-wide services or the municipal-wide charge for single, the single-family dwelling, and that's currently reflected in the bylaw. So when we compare to the existing rates for the residential charge, there is an increase in the municipal-wide charge over the previous or the current rate. But there is a decline in the sewer and water charge when compared to the current bylaw. For the current rates being charged, and that's across the board for the residential dwelling types. When looking at the non-residential, there is a small decrease from the previous or the current charge. Now, as you see, the wind turbines, there is an increase, and that's reflective of the single-family charge and the increase in the municipal-wide services. So when comparing the residential charge to other municipalities, you can see how the, both the current and proposed charges are above the average, and that's the average of those municipalities which are reflected here. Now, it's kind of hard to compare development charges to other jurisdictions because we don't know what services, what level of service is provided. But it gives you an indication that the current and proposed charges are not considered excessive compared to some of the municipalities that are compared here. That, the same can be said for the non-residential charge. While the, both the current and proposed charges are above the average of the municipalities reflected here, they are not the highest and they would not be considered excessive. So in regards to the policies and rules, so we'll obviously have the discussion at the end of the presentation, but just to go over what some of the discretionary policies and rules are in the bylaw. So as I noted earlier, the industrial development charge is 50% of the commercial charge. Warehouse, the charge for warehouses is 25% of the commercial charge. We have some, I guess there's some smart growth incentives here. So the built boundary and central intensification corridor reductions. So development that occurs within the built boundaries, and there's some maps that will be shown. There's a 10% reduction and for development that occurs within the central intensification corridor, they see the development charges that are calculated reduced by 25%. So these are the maps of the built boundaries. So this is the Arthur. And I believe it's the, well, it's the mauve-colored area. The built boundary for Mount Forest. And that is the central intensification corridor that resides within the built boundary, and that's the Arthur Central Intensification Corridor. And that's the central intensification corridor from Mount Forest. There is also reduction for purpose-built rental housing. And that is a further 25% reduction for purpose-built rentals within the defined areas. Now, I noted earlier that the amendments to the act actually provide for incentives for the construction of new rental housing, and that's as a result of the deferral or the the ability to pay over a prolonged period of time. And for nonprofit, I noticed it was 21 years. So just an added incentive for developers to build rental housing. And so we are done. So questions? Or comments?
John, could you stop sharing your screen for a moment, please? Okay, we'll start with the questions from members of council. Questions from council regarding to the presentation? Okay. Not seeing any, so I guess we'll open the floor up to other participants. Do you have anybody wanting with a hand up, Karen, at this point?
Not with a hand up, but some may have joined us. So anyone, oh, I've got one now, just a moment. That is, that would be. Okay, PJMS, you've got your hand up. I'm going to promote you to a panelist. We should be seeing you just shortly in the meeting. And so you're in the meeting. If you could unmute yourself and turn your camera on.
Can unmute myself? I'm not sure if I can un-camera me or not.
Could you just identify yourself then for us?
Yeah, Patty Jo McClellan Shaw from Hapfield Developments. And I was, I was just wondering if the speaker, John, could go back through just to explain where he got the numbers from capital costs on page 15 of 68 million to getting the amount of capital costs that are recoverable down to 6.4. What's the calculation? How does he come to that?
Hey, through you, Mr. Mayor, each project is reviewed in regards to how much of those capital costs would benefit the anticipated growth and how much would actually benefit existing development. And so that percent that benefits existing development is deducted from the gross cost. Because obviously, when you replace a pipe and upsize a pipe, part of that pipe will benefit the existing users of that service. So the act does not allow for development charges to pay for that component that would benefit existing development. Also, if there are any grants that are available to pay for that project, those are deducted proportionally between existing population and growth as well as if there are any monies left in the reserve. Those are deducted from the gross cost because it's pretty much, it's, it's assumed that those costs have been pre-collected and can't be, obviously are used to deduct or reduce the capital costs. So all those projects are identified in the appendices in the background study that are, that has been made available to the public.
Do you have any follow-up question?
No, I think that's that answers that question. Thank you.
Okay, I have a question that was submitted by J. Kerr. When will we see a list of specific capital projects used to generate the projected costs?
So again, through you, Mr. Mayor, those projects are contained in a background study. Now, I do have them in the back of the presentation. But we have what, nine, nine services, I believe, and we could go through them on a I wouldn't recommend it on a project-by-project basis, but but that information is available in the background study in Appendix D. So if members of the public would like to look at them, I don't know what specific questions they would have on a, again, on a project-by-project basis. So I can't really answer that question.
Hey, Darren, I see your hands up. Did you want to comment on that?
Not on that. I've got a separate question.
Okay. So that, just, just to be clear, that background study is posted on our website, that anyone can access the background study and look up that detailed information with regard to the capital project. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay, Adam?
Just as a point of clarification, it has not yet been posted on our website, but at the close of this meeting, we will get it posted for public consumption. Perhaps, John, you could go over some of the noticing period that those things would be eligible for viewing prior to another public consultation.
Yes, so the act requires that a public meeting be held. And that this is not the public meeting, this is a stakeholder session. The public meeting will be, I guess, working with Adam, will set up a public, the actual statutory public meeting. The background study needs to be made available. Well, actually, there's a new requirement. The background study needs to be made available 60 days before the bylaw is passed. So council, if the bylaws released today, the, if the background study and proposed bylaw is released today, council cannot pass the new bylaw until 60 days from that point. But the background study must also be made available two weeks prior, or sorry, two weeks, sorry, there's a public notice that needs to be made in regards to the public meeting, 20 days prior to the public meeting. And that background study needs to be made available two weeks before the public meeting. So what would tend to happen is the background study would be made available today. Council or two staff would decide on when the public meeting is, is to be held, but it can't be held in the next 20 days because the background study needs to be made available 20 days prior to that public meeting. For the notice, sorry, the notice needs to be put in the paper. So once that notice is in the paper, 20 days hence, you can have the public meeting. And the background study needs to be made available two weeks prior to that public meeting. So obviously, by putting the background study, making the background study available today, you're putting a notice in, you wouldn't have a problem meeting the requirement in regards to making the background study available to the, to the public two weeks prior to the public notice, to the public meeting.
Darren, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this year, we passed a zoning bylaw amendment that allows accessory apartments in existing dwellings in a kind of a broad range of zones. Our current bylaw exempts these accessory apartments within dwellings from development charges. But what our zoning bylaw amendment did is it now allows accessory apartments and detached structures. So in a an apartment above a detached garage on a lot, now these, these structures would have to pay full development charges, the same as a single detached. would have to pay full development charges, the same as a single detached dwelling. Council may want to consider exempting those the same as as accessory apartments within dwellings.
Okay, so just to be clear, Darren, what you're saying is that if they add an apartment in their existing residence, they're exempt from development charges, but if they put one above their garage, they have to pay the full amount.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, thank you. Derek, could you?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I I think with with respect to that, the act allows a second unit on a property regardless of whether it's within the building or outside of the building, as long as it's on the property. And the second unit is exempt from the development charges. So there's a little bit of crossover between what has been happening with municipalities like yourselves in the past whereby accessory buildings would be exempt, but now the act is sort of gone one step further. So for example, in a new development where you've got a single family home, they can automatically put a secondary unit in the basement, for example, or maybe, you know, adjoining in some way without charge, without a development charge being applied. Of course, the precise zoning requirements and all of that would need to be worked out, but what the act is saying on a broad level is that property orders are allowed to put in a secondary unit either in the basement or wherever that may be, without charge, without a development charge being applied. So I just wanted to bring that that point to the to the members of council and the public.
Okay, so thank you for that, Derek. I just want to make sure I understand clearly because I'm a little bit confused. Darren has said that, you know, they would apply to that accessory building if a unit was there and you're saying it's still exempt. So do we need to address this? Separately?
Ms. Mayor, I think within the bylaw, the wording has to reflect what the act is requiring. So once that's done, I think it'll be, as long as it's consistent with the act, then I think everything will be fine. But I think the existing bylaws as it stands exempts the ancillary units. But the updates to the act is doing that and going a bit further whereby it's saying it can be any secondary unit within a property. And there's some restrictions on that in terms of size and that sort of thing, but if there's a secondary unit, it's exempt from the development charges. So so again, that's something in the bylaw that we just take a look at to make sure that it's consistent with the requirements of of the act.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Darren, does that address the concern you have?
Yeah, it sounds like just a wording update needs to happen in the draft bylaw. So so yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. Do it. Do we have other questions from the panel, Karen?
Yes, Arthur Green Development Property Manager, and I'm I'm just going to read what they've written in relation to the deferral of the development charges for purpose-built rental housing. In which document is this following? Quote means a residential use building or structure that consists of four or more dwelling units that will remain as rental housing for a period of at least twenty years from the issuance of the building permit, end quote, found on page thirty one. Thank you. And I've asked Arthur Green if they would like moved in to speak to this, and I haven't had a response. So if you don't understand that question, I could move them in as a participant to elaborate. Oh, Dale has his hand up. Dale Small.
Okay, we'll go to Dale and I'll still think about that other one. Go ahead, Dale.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Lennox and council. Just a comment from my perspective, I just want to kind of voice my support for continuing with the purpose-built rental housing incentives that council put in place the last time we did the development charges. That was to try to help stimulate some development in rental housing as well as attainable housing. And I think we've been marginally successful in doing that. So I think from my perspective, it's important that we keep that in there for another another round. Also, the intensification and and that as well. So very supportive of that. And my only other comment would be from a stimulating development perspective, we may want to look at our commercial development charges. We're having some discussions with developers who are looking at fairly significant developments and we're starting to run short on commercial, I would say, property and commercial development. So we may want to look at that as well, but just my comments.
Your worship, I have moved Arthur Green Developments in. I'm not, I believe we can hear you. We we can't see you.
Yeah, so if you could just go over your question again, please?
Hi, how are you today? It's Paul O'Fenney here. Sorry, we're having some tech issues with our camera. We're trying to resolve that. Yeah, I'm just trying to get some clarity to the excerpt from the, I guess it was just the the study or the synopsis of the study. Just to understand in what act? I guess this appears maybe in the news block or the planning act. Just so we can have some understanding of the context, I guess, on both ends of where this quote came from. So that we can sort of structure things so that it aligns correctly with the the wording.
So your your area of concern is around the the definition of purpose-built rental, is that correct?
Uh, no, it's it's just to understand exactly from what act that that excerpt came from. Is it from the news block or planning act, or is that an excerpt from the bylaw? Because it's it's quoted, so we're just trying to understand from what what's the uh, what's the location that it came from?
Okay, okay, thank you. Mike, I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, so Mayor Lennox, the quotation that was covered in the the presentation comes from our bylaw. It's specific to purpose-built rental. And that, yeah, that that excerpt comes directly from our bylaw. Now, in the Development Charges Act, Paul, there's also new accommodations, and that's part of the reason we're going through the DC update as it relates to a deferral program. So there there's two separate things at play. The our definition of purpose-built rental is the township's definition. It's not, it's covered within our bylaw. The deferral program as it relates to rental is covered under the Development Charges Act.
Right, okay. Yeah, I guess, I I guess on that, because we've done some investigation in the past about this opportunity to exercise the items which is which are in the development charges act. And basically, our understanding was from some outside consultants that the if there's, if there isn't support municipal level, that moving these mechanisms forward, even though they are, I mean, technically the acts sort of from a legal perspective to the provincial jurisdiction to receive any municipal item. But again, you know, they need to, there needs to be support and there needs to be a mutual, you know, move forward between the developer, between the municipality, and then to exercise those those items within the act, because the the acts do provide for you know, this type of situation. I mean, there's a, there's a, there's a reason why we have an extreme acute shortage of rental housing. And basically, if there's no incentive to build rental housing, there's no incentive to build it. People are not going to build it because it's much more cost-effective and profitable to build single-family dwellings, you know, greenfield developments or condos for that matter in downtown Toronto and sell them out and receive the full proceeds upfront as opposed to having to deal with all of the things that come along with, you know, maintaining rental housing. It's a very slow trickle on the way back. There's a lot that goes out at the onset of the developments. But you only really receive anything back. I mean, it could take up to ten years really to even to repay the investment, whereas a greenfield development or a condo development, I mean, you could, you could, you know, recoup your investment and then the profit, especially in a hot market like it is within one year. So there's there's no incentive for people to build rental housing. And I just, I I guess the question specifically, because we're actually going to be going forward for site plan amendment at one sixty-four dirt street to increase the number of units, which is in alignment with our original grant funding proposal. Now, we're sort of refined it and we're going to put forward a finalized architectural proposal for that. And just to garner, I guess, some feedback, I don't know if you can respond in this context or not, but to understand whether or not there's a willingness to exercise some of those opportunities which are in the act to promote rental housing, because we are eager to to move those forward. But I guess that there is some restrictions in terms of, you know, the financeability and the ability to build these items. If it's, if it's basically, unfortunately, development charges or it is what it is are upfront. And we understand why, because there's a reason why, you know, infrastructure has to be paid for. But it also is not exactly a catalyst or or support to moving forward an item when basically every, the full downstroke is at moment one, and then you still have to go through all of the risk and all of the attributed time and effort to build the item. So it's it's complex.
So really quickly, Mayor Lennox, through you, as it relates if you meet the definitions within our bylaw, and this is, this is something our council acknowledged in the previous development charges bylaw was a twenty five percent reduction for purpose-built rental housing, Paul, you you know that that's not something that exists in other markets. It certainly exists here because we identified the need here. It'll be council's decision whether or not they want to continue with that and the revised bylaw. We've heard from our economic development officer who's indicated that that would be his guidance for council. But again, it will be a council decision around that piece. Now, maybe John or Derek or Adam would like to speak as it relates to the deferral piece. We went over that quite quickly as part of the presentation, and that's, that's something that's completely out of the the act itself and what we are instituting around that going forward. So John, Derek, you guys want to touch on the deferral as it relates to rental or Adam, is that something you'd like to speak to just quickly?
Through you, Ms. Mayor, I can just make a couple of comments with respect to the act. It just says that rental housing development that is not nonprofit housing can participate in the deferral payment plan. And that's, you know, with the six years of annual installments. But the act also allows municipalities to charge interest for that deferral and payment, which is to address the shortfall in in revenues that would have otherwise been collected. You know, if things went ahead as usual whereby the development charges would be paid at the time of issuing the building permit or at the very latest. So so I think you do have a policy in place already that addresses that and allows, there's a flexibility that allows developer, if they so wish, to participate in that program of the deferred payments. So and by law refers to that, the new bylaw refers to that policy. So if, you know, a developer wishes, they can participate in that, but then if they do their their math and decide, okay, we we don't want to pay any interest, you know, it doesn't work for us in this particular case, then they go ahead and pay as usual. You know, as as they have been previously. And then on top of that, there's the very specific, as Mike indicated, the incentive of twenty five percent off of the development charges. That's unique to Wellington North that that would would apply within that designated area. So I don't know if that answers the question.
What would the prescribed interest rate be and what 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 segment of the bylaw would we?
So Paulo, yeah, not not to not to cut you off, but we'll we'll share the policy with you directly, if that's okay, just so you can see the the specifics as opposed to us addressing that at this meeting, if that's okay?
Problem, of course. Thank you. Sorry.
No problem.
Okay, do we have other questions, Karen?
Uh, no, but we just might want to add again, the attendees that have called in to listen, if you do have a question, there's a button that you can raise your hand or you can submit a question in the question box.
Okay, while we while we're seeing if anybody else wants to, I'll just go back to members of council through all that discussion. Does anybody have any questions or comments that they'd like to make at this point?
I'm good for now. Thank you, Andy.
Okay, thank you. So just to make sure I understand the process carefully. So we're having this meeting today. This is an opportunity for community stakeholders to participate and learn about what the new proposed bylaw is going to look like. We still have to make the bylaw, proposed bylaw public and then go through a a special public meeting process before passing a new development charges bylaw, which is, given the season of the year, from the way I understand the timeline, definitely going to be getting this into the new year. Adam, have I got the chronology and so on right on this?
You do, Mayor Lennox. It's at a very minimum, we will have our bylaw posted and available for public consumption for a minimum of sixty days. And then within those confines, we'll be organizing a public meeting and then beyond that, the passage of the bylaw.
And in those intervening periods of time, if a member of the public has questions or comments, they can submit them to you? Is that the appropriate person or how would that part of it work?
Certainly happy to entertain any questions, else they could be addressed at the the public meeting of council prior to the bylaw passage.
Okay, great. Thank you. Karen?
PJMS had raised their hands, but they had another question, so I brought them into the meeting as a participant. If you could unmute yourself and let us know what it is you're wanting to ask.
It was more than, I wasn't really a question as much as a comment regarding the interest rates on those deferred payments. I think your guest from Arthur Green Development raised the issue, but I think it's important for people to understand and what drives development for whether you do condominiums or whether you do multipurpose rental. If you do condominiums, you pre-sell, you have cash upfront in order to build. With multi-res, you self-finance. So you have to either borrow, beg or steal the dollars to be able to do that funding. And with development charges, those are additional costs in above and like above and beyond the capital cost of actually building the actual multi-residential building. So I think it's important that when you're looking at this, that you make sure that the interest isn't crazy because then there will be no incentive to do that six-year deferral for the repayment of development charges. So we don't change our current status, if you will. So tho- those are the kind of items that I think, and you know, we always talk about affordable housing. And who really knows what affordable housing is? I mean, we know definition of what percentage of your income it should be in the, when we deal with multi-res, but we know in the market today, what's being built, it's it's much more expensive because the inputs are much more expensive. And so we need to make sure that those charges that are controlled by the municipality are reflective and to ensure that in the end, we actually get a building that will be affordable. The other part of that is that as new buildings come on, and they may be more upscale with more amenities and higher priced rents, those that are existing, there are people that will be able to move up into those units. Those new units and pay those prices. And so that that will leave current existing multi-res structures available at a lower price. So I don't think we want to be totally turned off, if you will, of new, the developed units that are more expensive. units that are more expensive because in the overall scheme of the rental market, the people moving up and having the, the resources to get into those other more expensive places allows others that are currently existing at lower rates to be available for those who need them, is all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I think the bottom line is we need an increase in supply so that the people have access to that type of housing.
Your worship, uh, Green, Arthur Green Development is raising their hand again.
Okay.
I'm going to move them in.
Go ahead.
He's just getting rejoined here.
Okay. So wh- while he's doing that, I just have a question for John or Derek. Does the Development Charges Act, is it prescriptive in terms of what the interest rate is on those deferrals? Or is that discretionary at the municipal level?
Uh, it is discretionary. So it's something that, you know, you can decide as a group, you know, for the municipality, what is best. And the province deliberately, I think, left that, left it that way so that each municipality can decide what's best for them locally in terms of the interest rate.
Okay, thank you. Dan, did you have a question?
Interesting question in regards to, I guess, process. So when do we, maybe this is the time, but I, I don't think it is, but when, when do we, I guess, as council, are we going to have the discussion in regards to what the numbers are, what we've seen the numbers are here today? Are we going to have that opportunity to say, well, you know, we don't agree with these numbers, we're not happy with them, we've already heard some concern in regards to possible you know, the commercial industrial number? So when are we going to have that opportunity to have that discussion?
Right, I will be corrected if I haven't got it wrong, but I think we have really three opportunities for that discussion. Counselor Yake, one is today, obviously. One would be when the public meeting occurs and the further one would be when it's time to pass the bylaw. So any and all of those, I think, would be appropriate. Preferably sooner, I'm sure, than later from staff perspective.
Okay, well, yeah, I understand that, but I mean, we've had these numbers less than an hour. Right? So it's, you know, we haven't really had a whole lot of time to really digest, you know, what we've heard here today. So I don't think, I'm not sure today would be the proper, you know, proper time to do that. So I think we all, we all need a little bit of time to digest what we've heard here in the presentation or what we've seen in the numbers and then have that discussion. If, if any of us have ideas or questions or concerns, can we in the meantime get ahold of Adam or, or John or Mike? I'm, I'm not sure how, how that process would work.
Okay. Adam or Mike, you want to take tackle directing those kind of inquiries?
So yeah, through you, Mary Lennox, a couple of comments I'd make. Yeah, Mary Lennox has identified the specific areas in when we could address them. I would also suggest that if council wants to have another meeting that's exclusive to diving deeper into the numbers, because yeah, I don't want to leave this meeting assuming that we're on the right track, if we're not, because the public meeting in my estimation is not the appropriate time for us to start having conversations about, well, our development charges that we're presenting to as part of the public meeting are not going to be reflective of the bylaw. If they aren't, we need to assess that and we need to address that now as a council and a staff. If that means a special, another special meeting of council, I know that's not something that everybody gets too excited about, but these development charges are late, setting the stage for $68 million worth of gross capital that we need to accomplish in order to meet the development forecasts for Wellington North. So if we're not going to go that route, we're in the middle of a municipal comprehensive review with the county and their growth forecast for Wellington North are even more aggressive than what has been built into the development charges. They're not formalized, they're not finalized at this point, so we can't use them to address. But this is the route we're, we're heading. We've talked about growth within this community for at least nine years and that's the reason that we continue to collect development charges because as John stated as part of the presentation, growth pays for growth. That's the anticipation and that's the direction that council has provided us, at least in my time here throughout. So if we're on the wrong road or on the wrong track from a council and a staff perspective, we need to pause and we need to have that conversation. Now, and when I say now, I mean before we get to a public meeting.
Okay, Dan, go ahead.
Okay, and I, I completely understand that. And I, like I said, you know, we've only had the numbers for a short period of time. We've already heard from one staff member that may have concerns in regards to the commercial number. So, you know, I, I, I'm not saying that we need to go in here and, and, you know, and I guess I haven't heard from any other council, but I'm just saying, I mean, we need to just take take some time to digest what we've seen. That's all. I'm not saying that we're on the wrong track, just saying, give us the opportunity to kind of look back through the presentation and, and, you know, agree or disagree with what we've been presented with.
Okay, so I think Karen, you've got Arthur Green Development on the line with a question. We'll go to them and then we'll continue this discussion.
We do, and then we also have a question from Peter McKenzie.
Okay. So our, our development, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, just to, I guess, in alignment with the, the, your previous caller who was speaking about these details in terms of, you know, buildings, purpose-built rental housing, you know, there, it, it, it's a complex process for sure. Obviously, there's things that have to be satisfied as, as the, you know, the, especially when you're talking about, you know, older buildings and, you know, infilling, you know, unique situations. And the, the other thing that I think is really important, feedback that we've received from some of the other sort of industrial and commercial members of the community who I mean, who are definitely employing a lot of people is that, you know, the things are interconnected with each other. So if you don't have housing to provide for potential employees, it's impossible to sort of move those processes forward. And we just, you know, we have an acute shortage that needs to be satisfied. I understand that, you know, there's a 25% reduction for the infill development within the central core of Arthur, but there's also a substantial reduction in the costs to the municipality in the central core of Arthur, i.e. the sewer lines already exist, the road infrastructure already exists, the sidewalk infrastructure already exists. So it's not, you know, a greenfield development where you, you're moving things at distance. It really is maximizing the existing square footages. So there's also that which, which is beneficial on the development charge or the reinvestment, I should say, because you're to, to, to your point, Mike, obviously the, the money needs to be, you know, the sewage treatment plant needs to be paid for, the roads need to be plowed, all those things need to happen. There's no question about that. But the reduced cost to the municipality or any municipality for that matter in this circumstance is also a benefit, right? Because it's really a, it's a shared benefit between the rental housing developer and municipality because the infrastructure in large part already exists. So we're just hopeful that there's a, an open-minded approach and we'll, we'll try and structure and align and everything that we, we will offer to you so that everybody is satisfied and so that, so that the sewage treatment plant can be built and so that the other things can always be maintained.
Okay, thank you. And you said you have, we have another question, Karen? Oh, sorry, you're muted?
Okay, so the question is from Peter McKenzie, can some clarity be provided around the application slash ranking of DC reductions? That is, would a purpose-built rental within the built boundary be subject to a 35% reduction? Which is 25% plus 10%? Or they, or are they applied in su- in sequence such as 10% first and 25% of the net?
Okay, Darren, can you help us with that one?
Yeah, it's 35% reduction.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, Karen?
Nope, not, no.
Okay. So, thank you, Counselor Yake, for getting the discussion going. Now, I guess I'm going to ask the rest of council to weigh in and, and see where we go with this, because we do need to find a way to get this moved to completion. So, any, anybody have thoughts, wishes with regard to process on how we move forward with this? Sherry, I saw you unmuted. Go ahead.
So my question, I guess, is without hearing all of the comments, like we've heard some really great comments from some developers here today. But for the public consultation where we're going to actually advertise that meeting, that's where I guess I sort of dispute what Mike had said earlier about we should be talking about where we want to go as a council now. I would far rather have that public meeting and, you know, the folks that weren't able to attend today, listen to their comments because it's, it affects what they're doing along with our business as a municipality. So I think this is really good information. I have some concerns about some of the discounts and some of the increases, but I'd really like to hear more from the developers themselves.
Okay. Do you care to talk about some of your concerns so that staff can hear about those?
Well, I just, I mean, we've, we've talked a little bit about commercial and how it's decreased by square footage. And I mean, does it, and I guess in my opinion, does it really need to decrease? We don't have a lot of industrial land around to build on. So, I mean, have it decreasing decreasing it sort of seems doesn't very, seem very sensible to me, but that's just my opinion. And then we've talked about the reduction on the continuing, the reduction on purpose-built rental housing. And I'd just like to ha- I'd like to hear a little bit more from developers because we do have some of these units going in. And I'd like to think a little bit more about whether that really is something that we need to continue or whether the reduction could be changed. Because we have quite a few developments already, either on the books or that have already started, that I believe fit this bill.
Okay. Other comments from members of council? Steve, go ahead.
Thanks and through you, Andy. Yeah, I wouldn't mind. I know we've had these this agenda for a little while now and I had gone through it, but I wouldn't mind kind of digesting a little bit more now that John has presented it. And yeah, this kind of yeah, feeling it out a little bit more. And like Sherry said, maybe seeing or trying to get more filter interaction or, and, and public as well.
Okay. Other questions, comments? So just to be clear, in terms of the process today, were a number of invitations sent to members of the development community to participate in this? Could you just describe for me that process?
Yes, the developers, there were some developers, oh, sorry, go ahead, Adam. Sorry.
Through you, Mary Lennox, staff had compiled a list of known developers within the community and the surrounding areas. The contacts were compiled and invites were sent on that basis.
So all of our current, you know, people with projects in the works were sent a personal invitation to attend today's information session? That, is that correct?
They were sent an email invitation with the Zoom link and then followed up with more context to that, that it was to hear the, hear about the development charges today.
Okay.
With a link, with a link to the agenda on the website.
Right.
And I can tell you that we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 10 on the line that I know are known developers, it, it, watching and listening to the meeting.
Okay. So I, I hear, you know, requests from members of council about greater engagement with the development community. Does anybody have any suggestions of how that may, might occur more than we already have today? Go ahead, Sherry.
So my question is, with the invitation, was the, was the agenda or was the presentation included in that invitation? First email went out with the, with the Zoom link and the second one that went out within a couple hours of that then had the link to our website, to the agenda with the presentation. Okay. Thank you. I had a call then, a couple of calls this morning that some people couldn't make it, but that they would be interested in watching the recording after we put it up on our YouTube. So I will send that link to that recording out to that same email group. And we will also put that on our website and Instagram it, tweet it and Facebook it like we do all our council meetings.
Okay.
Thank you. So my follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Would be that, so we have had some engagement today, which is great. We've got lots of and some that want to watch what is taking, taking place here today. I still think it's important that we have that public, still have that public meeting consultation. And I stand by what I had said earlier is that I think that we need to have all of that conversation before we can make some real decisions.
Okay. So am I interpreting your comments to suggest that the formal public meeting, we have that discussion and then we take some time to make any necessary revisions before bringing the bylaw forward? Is that your recommendation, Counselor Burke?
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
Okay. Counselor Yake, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, oh, I guess, and I don't know if Karen answered this question. When did the, when did the developers, the invitation to the developers go out? Did you say that?
Yesterday.
Yesterday. Well, I mean, that's not very much notice to begin with, but 10, you know, 10, 10 is I mean, it's always hard to get people engaged. So 10, 10 developers on the call in less than a day, with less than a day's notice, isn't too bad, but really a day's notice isn't I don't know, is that, is that proper notice too? Could we've got more people had we given more notice?
So I guess the question in my mind, Counselor Yake, is that in the previous discussion with Counselor Burke, she's saying that we could go ahead and, and book the public, the statutory public meeting. in the previous discussion with Counselor Burke, she's saying that we could go ahead and book the public, the statutory public meeting, have some discussion opportunity for engagement with the development community at that stage, but be prepared to make revisions at that stage before passing the bylaw if required. Are you, are you comfortable with that approach?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. I'm just, what I'm saying is, is, yeah, I'm comfortable with their approach that's been suggested. And again, you know, overall, I mean, the numbers don't look too terribly bad. And we, you know, I think we're doing a good job at trying to encourage and promote some development. But just in regards to today, I mean, the developers getting the package in one day, I don't think is appropriate. So, but moving forward, I'm okay with what's been recommended.
Okay. So when it comes to the statutory public meeting, there is a notice period that's prescribed in the legislation that, you know, will publish notice of that. And certainly anyone in the development community or the broader public can participate in that process.
Yeah, that's fine.
Karen?
Just a reminder, so if we're doing a public meeting under the Planning Act, it's very easy to get a circulation list and we mail out notices. That won't happen with this. The notice will go in the paper and on our website. I would ask any of the developers that are attending right now. Plus, we will also email everyone that was on the list, but if you're wanting a specific invite, please let us know. And secondly, I've moved H by, I'm having difficulty getting them moved in as a participant, but they're, they've just been given the ability to speak.
Okay, and do they have a question?
Randy, are you there? He did have a question earlier.
Believe he's unmuted. I think, I think it's actually Harry by. Harry, are you able to speak?
Sorry.
Perhaps some technical difficulties on their end, so.
Leave it to you. We'll come back to that if that resolves itself. So any other comments in terms of process from other members of council? Okay, I think now would also be a good time if we do have, you know, having seen what we've seen in the time that we've had it, if we have specific concerns, I think would be a good time to let staff know about some of those concerns so that they can be prepared to draft a bylaw that they think will fit the bill. And if it needs further revision than what we have today, sorry, excuse me, and, you know, better hit the target when the date, when the date, when the time comes. I know, for instance, the, I'm very much in favor of the current incentives that are in the, in our current bylaw with regard to, you know, within the built boundary, purpose-built rental, those types of things. I'm curious about the issue with the discussion around the commercial development piece in that I don't think I know, have a clear understanding yet of what commercial development specifically, what it is we need to incent. Is it downtown commercial? Is it, you know, highway commercial? What is the need there? I guess it's one of the things I'm struggling with because I do hear a lot of comments that, you know, there's not a lot of commercial demand. However, you know, I've seen a change in our main streets in that a few years ago, we were talking about numerous vacancies and that's certainly not the topic of conversation today. So I'd like to better understand that issue. And I mean, we can talk about that. If staff would like to put a report in front of council in an upcoming meeting, that would be a good opportunity to discuss that as well. But I'm, I personally am in favor of continuing with the incentives. And certainly in terms of the, the development charges rates, given the number and scale of capital projects that are going to be undertaken to accommodate this growth, I'm thrilled to see that the development charges, the net amounts are not significantly different than what we've had in the past and probably more reflect just an inflation, a slight inflationary increase. So I, I think, you know, from a balanced perspective, it's pretty good, didn't it? We're not asking a whole lot more of the developers, but we're looking to deliver a whole lot more in terms of capital projects to support development. So with that part of it, I'm thrilled. Mike?
Just, just one further comment and maybe more specific to the incentive concept. And I think this is known and I, and I agree, we're trying to find a balance around that. But from, for council's perspective, every time we incent development charges, it undervalues the amount of dollars we're collecting to complete the capital works to allow for that development, if that makes sense. So, you know, every time we incent something, you know, we're leaving a gap that is, the gap is basically captured by the taxpayers. So development charges, when you incent it or reduce it to the benefit of development, and we've done it in certain circumstances because there's certain development we want to incent, the people picking up the tab at the end of the capital project are the existing residents, are the existing taxpayers. So there is a balance around that, that we've tried to work with for a long time to try and gear development in a manner that we want without creating large gaps that our taxpayers and our existing taxpayers have to capture. So I just want to raise that point. We've heard a lot about incentives and a lot from the developers about, you know, wanting to work with us, but, you know, acknowledging that there's challenges that they face. We also face challenges as it relates to an annual budget and completing $68 million worth of capital projects to allow the development to proceed. So that's the balance we're trying to accommodate for both existing residents, our new residents that come with the development and development charges.
Okay. So Karen, go ahead.
Paulo has his hand raised again.
Okay.
Paulo, I'll move you in as a participant, if I, panelist, if I can, I was having trouble with. And Carrie in. Here's gone.
Hi. Yes, I, I agree completely with Mike in terms of the fact that obviously all of these capital expenditures need to be covered, there's no question about that. I think there's one important detail to note when it comes to this type of development. If the incentive comes at the front end, it allows the item to be built. Now, these incentives are not forever. They are for short periods of time. And in the case, for instance, this deferral of development charges, it is in fact a deferral. The development charges still have to be paid. The question is, if you don't get the item built, then you can't have impact come in and revalue that item, which of course will be substantially more valuable. And then you get to recapture the tax dollars for perpetuity. So the, I think the important thing is that in order to get the item built, there's a necessity to put, especially when it comes to, you know, purpose-built rental, there's a substantial inbound amount to get the item built. The deferral allows for basically a cash flow situation to allow the item to be built. You still get all your development charges and you end up with a building that's worth tens more than it was before. And for the next 20, 30, 40, 50 years, you get the increased value because impact does not look at these buildings when they're complete as if they're a devalued item. They look as a income-producing item and therefore you get the.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
So if you're not speaking, could you put yourself on mute? We're having some. Thank you.
Okay. So any other, yeah, discussion items or directions that we'd like to give staff for the next step in this process, members of council? So I'm not seeing a lot of participation in that particular thing. So I guess the next step in the process is to move to the next stage, which involves posting the proposed bylaw.
So are you worship, Brian Padfield has his hand raised?
Okay, I'll just do a little wrap up here and then I'll come back to him. So the next stage in the process would be posting the draft bylaw and then moving towards the public meeting where we give public notice of that public meeting, make any revisions at that point in the final draft before passing the bylaw. And then the bylaw would have to follow that, after that point at a future council meeting. So. So with that said, you say you had Brian Padfield on the line, Karen?
Brian, you're moved into the meeting now. If you take yourself off mute and put your camera on, we can see and hear you. Yeah, we can hear, we can hear you.
Okay. I'm looking at the sketch here, the built boundary from Mount Forest. And I'm thinking about where you want to have your more intensive multi-residential spots. There's a lot of interest in the southwest corner of Mount Forest and that's around the sports complex and that general area. And in fact, there is a draft plan approved there for something like 183 units. And I'm just wondering if that area shouldn't be recognized as a growth area. And some of the encouragements that are being talked about here should be extended to that area now. You can't do one without the other. And there is a development over the river which has about 280 draft plan of room units. And that's not within the core at all, but because of the sports complex and all those other things over there and all the healthcare, should that not be recognized somehow in some terminology as a core area? I have no experience with that, I'll just leave it there, but that just popped up to me part of your debate session, I guess.
Okay. So, so I think in terms of that, I believe the built boundary that's on the map that you have there is created through some planning documents.
Right.
And the zoning bylaw, of course, determines what type of housing would, could be built in those areas. But I think what you're talking about is you're thinking that adding additional incentives to those greenfield areas would, would be appropriate. But I think the, and I'm not saying I disagree with you on that. I'm just saying that the purpose of what we're talking about with the incentives for in the built boundary is to encourage possible development where existing water and sewer services already are in place. And that's the justification for those incentives.
I understand, these are services which are about to be installed soon. And I just thought that it might be proactive to include some encouragement for growth in that area. But just leave that as a point of discussion.
Good. Thank you for that. Did you have any other questions, Brian?
No, I don't, thank you. I would like to compliment you and all you for having this meeting. There's been a lot of misunderstanding and a lot of wrong coffee shop talk about what is involved in these challenges. And I, I just think that this discussion, as you have it formulated this afternoon, is logical and understandable by the average guy and that's an improvement over some others that I've seen.
So thanks very much for that, Brian. Okay, do we have any other questions in the docket, Karen?
No, we do not.
Okay. Well, one last round with members of council, any more discussion or directions we'd like to give staff at this point? Okay, again, I would thank John and Derek for your presentation today and being with us to help unpack some of the things that are included in proposed development charges future. So with that, we'll move to our confirming bylaw this afternoon. So we have a recommendation here that bylaw number 110-21 being a bylaw that confirms the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of the Towns for Wellington North at its special meeting held on November 30th, 2021, be read a first, second, and third time and enacted. Could I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Dan, seconded by Steve, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you. We'll move on to our adjournments this afternoon. A recommendation here that the special council meeting of November 30th, 2021 be adjourned at 3:29 PM. And could I get a mover and a seconder for that, please? Moved by Sherry, seconded by Lisa, all those in favor? That's carried, thank you very much. We are adjourned for today. I think our next regular council meeting is not this coming Monday, it's the following Monday, right?
December 13th at 2 o'clock.
Okay, thank you. I hope everybody has a great afternoon.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good week.